You all are going home, right? We're not going to work.
Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Pittsboro Board of Commissioners to order for September ninth, and we will start with a moment of silence. Thank you. Commissioner Farrell, please leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Renee Warren Ross for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is to the pride of the United States of America. To be the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under our God, individual, liberty, and justice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
We have the adoption of the agenda. Is there any changes to the regular agenda or the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just make one comment on two eleven, just a short comment. Nothing against or anything, just a comment I'd like to make for the record.
Okay, we can move that to action item number three. Any other changes?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more change. And that would be ceremonial topic four one.
Okay. Do you want to change?
Translate it.
We have a special translation.
It is translated in Spanish. All right, then don't change that.
Okay. Okay. Any others? Take a motion to approve the regular agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second, move by Commissioner Vos, second by Commissioner Farrell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Taking motion to approve the consent agenda with number eleven removed.
Remove.
Commissioner Foley?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Vos, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Up next is information items. Does any, the information item this time is the annual solid waste report. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Um, yes. I'm really excited to see this. And glad to see that we're engaging in this reporting process. And I'm guessing that this is a new recurring activity?
Uh, yes, it is. And it's consistent with the N C D E Q requirement for annual reporting.
I think this is the first time that I've seen it at board level, but it looked like from the data that maybe this is the second year that we filed the report.
Um, certainly the second year I've been involved with it. So I, I have not heard anything to the contrary from a D E Q, so.
Maybe I'm mistaken.
That's our knowledge, we're in compliance. So I, I just thought with, um, you know, it's of general interest and especially kind of uh, setting a baseline. Considering we rolled out the ninety-five gallon quart, so, you know, give us another, you know, kind of data point to evaluate for next year.
Yes, thank you. And, and I'll pass along, there's been several notes of gratitude in, in the Chatham, Chatham Forest neighborhood about the bigger bins. So kudos to staff.
Great to hear.
And, uh, the, you know, leave it, leave it to the guy who used to drive a trash truck to be fascinated by this report, particular report, but I think it raised some questions that I'd like to seize the opportunity. I think there's a lot to be learned from this form. And, um, the few questions that I have is like, do we as a town want to formally encourage and educate people to reduce waste at the source? Uh, because that's, that's a program that we're not doing presently. And we could reduce, uh, the cost of disposal by asking people to reduce waste. Um, another is, do we want to encourage backyard composting? And that's something I'm very fond of. If we don't have to set it out by the curb, staff don't have to pick it up. It's a lot of savings and, and perhaps reduce, reduction of risk. And on that note, uh, I remember a time when we were composting our leaf mulch. Um, the town was composting unofficially, I mean, by collecting the leaf mulch and then leaving it at the back of the public works lot for years. It naturally moldered and decomposed. Are we allowing, uh, citizens any longer to come and get rotten leaf mulch?
Yes, we are, we continue that.
Good, that's great. And, um, I think I've heard perhaps in budget sessions or somewhere that the white goods that we're collecting up the quartz facility are, uh, the weights on those annual disposal is estimated. Is, is that right? Or are we actually weighing those refrigerators?
It's estimated.
It is estimated. So, um, it might be interesting to see how we might advance to actual weighing of that material to just sharpen our game. But, um, thanks again for sharing this report with us. And, um, I just wanted to raise those rhetorically to stimulate thought on the board. Thank you. I'm just gonna piggyback if you'd like, Commissioner Bonnet. We have a compost in our backyard as well. I think there's a possum, it's very grateful. Uh, that's beyond the scope of this meeting. Uh, it is something that is quite green. And if the town would encourage it on its, on its website, I think it might be a plus as well as the, uh, short memory, what was the first item you, you brought up? Uh, source reduction, waste reduction, composting, backyard composting. So I, I agree with your comments as well.
Thank you. I think the county has a lot of information, sure, containers and stuff too, so maybe we just link up there's.
Be great. And the state, the same office that administers this, this query, this, uh, reporting process also has resources available. So we're not recreating the wheel that way. Yeah. Yeah. Lot of educational tools out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, up next is a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. So we have a proclamation honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide from September fifteenth through October fifteenth of the year. The observation began in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover the month as it is celebrated today, calling upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs. Whereas September fifteenth is significant because it's the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico, Chile, Belize celebrate their independence days on September sixteen, eighteen, and twenty-one respectively. Therefore, the observance of National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the culture and traditions of people whose ancestry can be traced to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean Islands. And whereas Latinx's are individuals that are descendants from Latin American countries and may speak a variety of different languages. Hispanics are individuals that speak Spanish and are descendants from Spanish-speaking countries, including Spain. Latinx is a gender neutral and inclusive term to refer to people of Latin American descent, and we also recognize that the Latinx community encompasses Black, African, Asian, Indigenous, and LGBTQ plus communities. And whereas in twenty twenty, the U S Census Bureau counted ten thousand three hundred and seventy-two Hispanic and Latino residents in Chatham County out of seventy-six thousand two hundred and eighty-five people, or about thirteen point six percent of the county's population. In Pittsboro's ten point seven percent of residents are Hispanic Latino, while about nearly fifty percent of Siler City's residents identified as Hispanic Latino. Whereas the Town of Pittsboro Board of Commissioners recognizes the unique and vital role our Hispanic and Latino residents play in the fabric of our economy and workforce, as well as our faith communities and social tapestry. And whereas the Hispanic liaison will be acknowledging the contributions of the Hispanic Latinx community at its eleventh Hispanic Heritage Fiesta on Saturday, September twenty-first at Shakori Hills Brassroots Festival of Music and Dance. Now, therefore, I, Kyle Ship, Mayor of the Town of Pittsboro, North Carolina, and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month in Pittsboro, and urge its residents to participate in the activities to learn more about Hispanic and Latino communities. And that's adopted this ninth day of September. Uh, and we did, uh, have a Spanish translation as well.
Hello, everyone. My name is Eileen Satello. I am the advocacy, advocacy program coordinator with the Hispanic liaison, and I'm just here to thank everyone of you that adopted this proclamation. We are in the midst of organizing our eleventh annual Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Fiesta that will be happening in the Shakori Arts Center. We're gonna have different variety of activities, including children plays, um, the parade, food, and a variety of other events. So we encourage everyone of you to come out and enjoy the music and the live, um, performers as well. Sorry, my director wasn't able to make it today, so here I am trying to cover for her, but I really hope to see everyone. I have a little flyer that we'll be distributing, um, and also.
Just give it to Kerry.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Up next is the Citizens Matters, and we'll start with the manager's update.
To be here, thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to Chris for an update on some water and sewer projects.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the board. So we still obviously have a lot of interest in utility, uh, utility system and utility projects. Uh, of course, the merger was, we reached the functional stage of the merger on July first, so that means the operations, the maintenance, billing, customer service are primarily being carried out by Tri River Water. We, of course, have a interlocal agreement for, um, bill collection, uh, through, at least through December, um, of, of this year. Uh, that is, as I understand from Heather, the, uh, that is trending in a direction pointed more towards Tri River, so, um, that's, uh, that's positive in that regard. Uh, we also have a interlocal agreement for construction inspections, so that will continue. Uh, that is a one-year agreement, so, uh, through June thirtieth next year, I'm sure we will, you know, come back to the, to the table to discuss if that needs to continue or what the best arrangement is there. You know, the merger, the functional merger, I think, was, uh, very successful. Uh, you know, we talked about some of our priorities. Of course, one of our priorities were the employees of the Town of Pittsboro who were transitioning. I think that was a very successful process, uh, you know, thanks to a, a number of people who, uh, assisted with that, um, in the May timeframe. Uh, H R office from the city of Sanford came to Town Hall and did a employee orientation with the staff, which I thought was, you know, was a very wise and, and positive, uh, step. So, um, no major issues, uh, to date, so, uh, we feel like that is, uh, going smoothly. Tri River has reinstated, uh, late fees and cutoffs, uh, effective this month. They did have a two-month, uh, kind of, um, they kind of stayed that for two months, uh, to help people get familiar with, with the new process. So, um, so the merger is, uh, going well in that regard. Um, another major part of the merger is the construction of the force main transmission system between Pittsboro and Sanford. That project right now is in review with, uh, D E Q Division of Water Infrastructure. Tri River has proposed options. When it was a Pittsboro project, we designed and bid an eighteen-inch, uh, force main with the associated pumping station. They have also introduced options for a twenty-four inch force main line and a thirty-six inch force main line. So the choice there will be a combination of things, certainly cost, and also the feedback that they receive from the Division of Water Infrastructure as far as the permitting requirements for the modifications to the existing permit. So, uh, so that is, um, the update there. Uh, you know, some kind of ancillary questions that I have received related to that. For now, Tri River is, intends to retain the Pittsboro Water Plant and the Pittsboro wastewater plant in operation for, um, up to ten years and possibly beyond. That, that pivot was a result of the merger, uh, specifically for the wastewater plant. The agreement had been for all wastewater to be diverted to Sanford because it was a business arrangement, but now that they are operating, they have the ability to, uh, retain the Pittsboro wastewater plant. So, uh, that, that to me feels like a, uh, definitely a positive, uh, kind of, uh, development. So, um, that's what's happening there. The other piece of the kind of physically connecting systems is the water transmission system. Tri River recently engaged a consultant to do design and easement acquisition. Those two processes will take eighteen to twenty months to complete design and easement acquisition, so the, the construction will, will follow. So we're still, um, three. So the, the construction will, will follow, so we're still, um, three, probably in the three-year range to having, uh, you know, that, that physical water connection, uh, to Pittsburgh. A couple of projects that, uh, staff, Pittsburgh staff were very proud to initiate just prior to the functional merger were the Horton tank renovation and the Hearn Road Water System improvements. Horton tank improvements were completed. Uh, they were initiated in May-June timeframe as soon as school was out, and they finished in July. And it, it really a great project. Of course, the interior, the entire interior of the tank was, um, sandblasted. It received three coats of paint. Uh, the interior ladder was repaired, a number of just significant repairs. The chronic leak that, um, I know many of us received, you know, inquiries, complaints about was repaired. The, the other issue with the turkey vultures that were, uh, had taken up habitat there, uh, has been, um, resolved as well. So just a very successful project, uh, with the Horton tank repair. Uh, same with Hearn Road, um, and, you know, we, you know, would just like to say how much we appreciate the, the residents, you know, the property owners of residents on Hearn Road. Because if they had not, uh, been receptive to our invitation to start that project, to try to fast-track the easements, um, and actually dedicate the easements where they were needed, that would not have been possible. So, uh, that was a very successful collaboration between the town and those property owners. The main, the actual new water main, has been installed and the, uh, so currently we are, the contractor is awaiting delivery of the setters for the meter boxes. And we are considering an option, a different option for actually tying in the new water main because of a delivery delay on the, what's called a tapping saddle, uh, wet tap. So anyways, that has gone very smoothly so far. Uh, contractor has, you know, you, we could not have ended up with a better contractor. They have, they have taken our kind of instructions and really worked as an extension of, of the town doing that project, so, um. So those are going well, the, the B Nano, the filtration pilot project, um, has been underway at the water plant. So I think it, I think they started in, uh, April-May timeframe. Uh, we recently were not getting positive PFOS results. So they, along with the water plant staff, examined the initial placement of the equipment and learned that we had not placed it in the optimal location to be able to get contaminated, you know, raw water, basically. And so, um, they have, just last Friday, completed a shift. They shifted the equipment in the, within the plant and started a new, uh, pilot test. So we should have the first test results from the new location on, uh, September twenty-fourth, so. Those are some updates. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can, can you give us an idea with the, with the eighteen-inch force main, we're talking about four to five million gallons, I think? What's the volume increase with going to twenty-four, thirty-six inch?
There's some, um, yeah, there's a little bit of, um, conversation around that, uh, that, that's happening right now. Um, I've heard, I've heard some slightly different reports. I've heard a report that Tri River's, uh, analysis of the eighteen-inch, uh, line based on the, you know, the distance and the, the pump configuration would accommodate, um, only just over two NGD. Uh, you'll recall, we had received some reports, uh, from Wooten Company last year that it may be able to be modified to, uh, four to five NGD with, with pump reconfiguration. So that honestly has us a little, um, confused at this point. So we're kind of awaiting the different information or, you know, exactly what the situation is there.
And I'll just echo, uh, the Hearn Hill residents, all very pleased with the construction going on there and, uh, and had been nothing but positive comments.
Yeah, they've been really pumped to work with. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
If I can make two comments real quick.
Give up your time.
I wanted to check out the Hearn Road project, but by the time I got out there, it was already done. So that speaks to how well that project went. Uh, the other one on the BN Nano, the, the pipe where they were getting the water from was actually, had some, uh, GAC water coming through it. So I think that speaks to how great the GAC system is doing, that they had to move where they were getting water from because they could not get any positive tests on the chemicals they're trying to treat. So, um, in terms of that pilot, it was a mistake, but in terms of the overall water plant, that's something to celebrate, that the water was too good for them to use for their system. So I'd point that out.
I have one, one favor to ask, uh, you, Mr. Franklin. I talked to Corey during the tour about the granular activated charcoal tanks, and I asked him if they were being backwashed, and he wasn't certain whether or not they were. Backwashing, uh, every night resettles the charcoal granules so that there's no channeling of the water the next day. And so you have, uh, less, uh, breakthrough that way. Does that make any sense?
Absolutely.
If you have a, if you have a jar of sand and you pour water through it, after a while, a water will make, uh, a, a, a very fast trail through the. So if you shake up the sand every night, it takes its time going through the water till, till it's down. So that filtration process is much more effective if we're backwashing. Now, I don't know about the size of those tanks, whether or not they can be backwashed, but it's something that, uh, it just re- what it does is it will save the town money because we won't have to replace our charcoal as often, if there aren't any, if there are breakthroughs.
Yeah, no, I, so, check with.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Yes. All right. I will start with my updates. I had, uh, two ribbon cuttings this last time on September, uh, August fifteenth. We did, uh, Hoops Pizza up at the Alpha Center. And, um, on August twenty-eighth, we did a mural at the plant. So that was my first ribbon cutting for a mural, but, uh, first of many, I hope, and a really, really cool one out there. Uh, August twenty-eighth, also, we went to Cora and, uh, did a presentation for them at their board meeting. Uh, August sixteenth, we had the Finally Friday event with the banana split contest. And I am happy to have lost to the person who won, because I'm not sure how she did that. So, uh, congratulations.
Be determined.
And, uh, August twenty-second, we had a downtown stakeholder meeting that was really well-attended. And August twenty-fourth, we had the hype team orientation for the downtown hype team. So, uh, really cool stuff that they're doing. Uh, this weekend, I was at the, uh, in Greensboro, this time at the Hunt State Policy Fellows. And so we covered post-secondary education, uh, completed that program. Uh, so really, really good knowledge there about the broad spectrum of education. And August twenty-sixth, we had the Central Pines Regional Planning Organization. That was a special meeting just to make some small changes to the STIP, uh, plan. And then next meeting's October tenth. We had a EDC meeting on August twenty-first, things are going well. And, uh, had an EPA subcommittee meeting on September sixth. And there's, we're actually producing a, or some of the committees producing a document that's EPA resources specifically for local governments about, um, climate and what we can do on that. So like a infographic-type handout that summarizes EPA resource. That's all I have. Commissioner Proten Baldwin?
Thank you. On August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, I attended the Central Pines Regional Council Board of Delegates Meeting, and that was a good meeting. We, there was a new chair. Every year, you get a new chair, so there, the new chair is Brent Gann from Apex. So he will serve until next June and then elect another. So we had, uh, what we're going to focus on, or try to focus on, rather, is regional vision. So what we're going to do is try to look at the area as one region and try to talk with each other and present things regionally. So that way, when we plan things, it will be planned out a little better. So there were two people that presented from other regional councils. It was someone from Utah, and it was very, very good presentations. And it was someone from Ohio. And they, again, they were good because these individuals had shown us basically how they did in terms of regional planning. So it's a sort of a long presentation. I wish you all could see it, but it was, it was really good. So our next meeting won't be until, uh, the next Wednesday of next month, the end of the month. So that's all I have to say about that. And then, of course, the fair is set for September nineteenth through September twenty-second. And hopefully you all can attend. If you have anything to put on there as an exhibit, plants, uh, vegetables, anything that you grew, we are gladly accepted. But this year, I don't have anything to put on there because my plant died. I think I overwatered it. But anyone else, please come out. We want you all to come out and participate. If you know any little girls, we'll be doing a Little Miss Chatham County Fair, and that will be held on September, uh, on that Saturday at approximately three o'clock. So if anyone has any little girls aged five through twelve, I'm sorry, five to ten, then we want you all to bring them out and participate in that. But again, it should be a good fair. This is the seventy-fifth fair, so we want to encourage everyone to please come.
Oh, this year's the seventy-fifth?
Yes.
I was the seventy-fourth, so.
This is the seventy.
Glad to be corrected.
Yes, this is seventy-fifth. So look forward to seeing you all at the fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With your thoughts?
Yes, thank you. So the last Climate Change Advisor Committee meeting, uh, I was absent from that meeting, but the speaking with the leaders and, uh, reviewing the minutes reflects some noteworthy things that I'll highlight for this board and for the public. The county's twenty seventeen Climate Action Plan was discussed, and progress towards implementation of the plan was, was, uh, accounted. Three county buildings now have rooftop solar panels. Uh, that includes the new school administrative offices, the environmental quality building, both which are on Renaissance Drive, and the building we're in now, the County Agricultural Conference Center. Uh, more buildings are planned to receive solar panels. As well, energy efficiency and conservation are planned, as is the use of geothermal or ground source energy to, say, conserve, uh, fossil energy. A staff-level conservation working group was mentioned, and it was decided that this temporary group will continue working because of the value and the opportunities shown through this collaboration. Apparently, they're finding some real, uh, wins, uh, through this staff-level work. Also, county staff attended the Sustainable Fleet Technologies Conference and are considering installing telematics on county vehicles for efficiency information. So this would be basically a system that, uh, tracks mileage and other data going through the, the computer of the vehicle and gives insights in a, uh, an easily digested way about how the fleet as a whole is operating, as well as those individual vehicles. And it's a great way to save money and, and, uh, goes towards safety as well. Also, it was noted that the Pittsburgh Planning Board voted against the proposed Alston Chapel rezoning. And that is all I have to report on that.
Commissioner Farrell?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Foley?
I have two updates for affordable housing. One, I attended the Raleigh Symposium for Affordable Housing. Uh, some dynamic speakers there. It's on, uh, YouTube, so if you'd like to, to, uh, pop in and take a look at some of the feedback that was given, some of the programs that they're doing, it's good stuff. More locally, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee of Chatham County met at, at, uh, XDS or Penny Lane. Thank you, Jonathan Franklin and Teresa Thompson. They were both representing the Town of Pittsburgh there as well, so it felt warm and welcomed there. Uh, there was a pit, there was a parakeet there that was out of the cage. It was very, quite friendly and landed on Jonathan's head. I have a nice picture of beautiful bird on Jonathan's red head.
Yeah.
Great picture. More seriously though, XDS Cross Discipline Services is a, it's a wonderful program that works through, uh, UNC hospitals. They integrate mental health, housing, and medical issues for all those who enroll. Uh, we, we had a tour that day of tiny homes. Uh, they have fifteen tiny homes that are in XDS, on XDS property. That is just, uh, behind the new CCCC Health Center Educational Building. Uh, and we had a great time. Wonderful facility. So that's my updates on affordable housing.
Thank you. Commissioner Vos?
On Thursday, August twenty-second, Will and I attended the Downtown Stakeholders Meeting at Havoc. Also, that same day, I did an ABC Board meeting, and I'm happy to say that Pittsburgh's ABC Store Number Two is moving forward quickly. On Saturday, the twenty-fourth, I went to the Come Out and Play Sculpture Show. Jonathan Franklin, Teresa Thompson were also there. I think we got some good stuff out of that. There was an Arts Council meeting last Tuesday. Nothing really town-related came from that. And then I was also at the ribbon cutting on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, uh, over at the plant for the mural by artist Thomas Beg.
Thank you. Uh, for public comment, we don't have anyone signed up still here. And up next is a public hearing for, uh, Chatham Park Investors LLC. It is A twenty twenty-four zero-three PB twenty-four two ninety-four. Take a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Proten Baldwin. Second, Commissioner Farrell, all those in favor, say aye.
Hey. So in your packet this evening, there's a, uh, there's a request to annex that sort of small green sort of bowtie-looking thing at the bottom there that is the actual subject of this annexation. That's a little bigger. We're getting there. Anybody have any questions?
There was no one signed up for public comment? I'll take a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Commissioner Vos, second. Commissioner Vos, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And?
Very much.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the annexation request for voluntary contiguous annexation petition A twenty twenty-four zero-three PB twenty-four two ninety-four.
So moved.
Mayor Proten Baldwin, second. My Commissioner Foley, all those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Up next is action item number one, uh, US fifteen five oh one Truck Route, the assignment.
Thanks, Ken, Mayor. So, you know, certainly downtown improvement and public safety are two high priorities for, for the town, for the board, and for staff, so, um, So, uh, those two kind of came together, um, on this particular action item. You'll recall, in the fall of 2022, we initially discussed, uh, an interest to, uh, look at reassigning the truck route that currently follows Sanford Road and then on to Hillsborough Street through the traffic circle and on through, uh, north through town. So we have been in conversations with NC DOT. Um, over that time, um, we had an additional layer added to this in, uh, the beginning of 2024 that was not discussed originally or not shared with staff originally. And that was the, uh, cost match requirement. So the, the cost for this project to do the signage, design and installation is about $250,000. And, uh, NC DOT requires that, uh, the municipality participate in 50% of that cost for $125,000 in this case. So through our discussions and considerations, I mean, we've outlined a number of advantages, uh, for this, uh, initiative, uh, that would directly affect downtown. Uh, certainly the safety, as I mentioned, uh, for that entire route, specifically the new kind of food and beverage district that has developed over the last couple of years between the traffic circle and, uh, the kind of ABC store location. There's a lot of pedestrian activity on both sides of the road. There's a lot of crossing, uh, you know, at unmarked, uh, locations. So, uh, removing the, the trucks would only, you know, would remove another potential hazard, you know, for pedestrian safety. Um, certainly the same holds true for the kind of center of, of downtown. Not having the trucks would also allow for a more pedestrian oriented design as we're looking at a streetscape enhancement along with the DOT project in a couple of years. You know, there's, you know, certainly there are some offensive, potentially harmful emissions, uh, generated by, uh, you know, larger trucks and vehicles of that nature. So that would be removed. Um, there's a lot of wear and tear on the infrastructure, uh, as a result of the heavy truck traffic, construction, traffic, et cetera. The auditory and visual enjoyment of that, uh, part of downtown, the kind of core part of downtown would, would be improved by not having the, uh, the heavy trucks through there. And it would, um, legally, it would allow us to enact a, uh, no-through-trucks ordinance for that, uh, sector of town. So the current proposal is for the truck route assignment to be reassigned to Highway 87, beginning at the intersection of Sanford Road and Highway 87. Then trucks would continue on Highway 87 until the, uh, interchange with US 64 Bypass, and then they would, uh, proceed east on Highway 64 Bypass and then, uh, re-enter US 15501 at, uh, just north of the Powell Place location and continue on the route as it exists today. So, um, so the other significant consideration is, is the timing. Uh, we have received, uh, end of last week, we received the agreement from, uh, NC DOT. So, um, kind of the framework is in place to move, um, relatively rapidly with this as far as engaging the agreement. The, uh, DOT tells us it will be approximately one year, uh, from the time we sign the agreement and make the payment until the actual rerouting will begin. From that time will be needed for the sign, design and fabrication, so.
Thank you, Ken. Any other comments?
I do have, go ahead. I have a comment and a question. So when they are, certainly they're going to widen that section on 87.
There are no, there are no intrin- intrinsic points with this initiative to widen 87. The, I think it's been called modernization of Highway 87, uh, remains a project in the, uh, STIP program. Is, you know, currently unfunded and is in an out year. However, with this particular, uh, truck route project, there is not a plan for widening.
I think this does increase our ability to have a higher score for that project that's on the STIP, since it is back on the STIP now, which it was off for a while, I think, so.
My concern is the residents on that street because there are a lot of people and there's a daycare on that street. So that is my concern and the safety of those residents, as well as the daycare and those little children. So somehow we've got to make sure that that's some type of safety protocols are put in place for those places. And the end of it, the residents there, they need to know that that's what's going to happen because they, you know, there is traffic that comes there, but if we turn that into a, a truck route, it's definitely going to be increased significantly, and there has to be a lot of precautions there in reference to the residents. I do, would not want anyone to, uh, trucks go pretty fast, because I used to ride my bike out there, and then they told me, don't do it anymore because the truck is going, these trucks that are on that street, they're going to pull, the air will pull you into the truck. So we have to be careful, uh, if we do turn this into a truck route for the safety of the individuals as well as the children.
Yeah, that's certainly a great point, and that, you know, certainly is in, you know, in the front of our thoughts about, you know, how to do this. Um, I mean, for that, to that particular point, we have a sidewalk project that we received, uh, CMAC funding that we'll be designing and building, um, in this same timeframe. So that, that will eliminate a hazardous, one hazardous location between, uh, elementary school road and the park. So, but certainly we will, uh, keep those thoughts as part of this project. Thank you.
Question, uh, how is it tied in, is it tied in with GPS? So can you talk about how trucks will be directed in the proper way? Is, is it just signage?
As far as the agreement that we will sign is just for signage. The, I will need to look into how the GPS part happens.
Yeah, so it would be the designation of the truck route would be moved, which would then update in the trucker's GPS.
Okay.
Different, different ones that they follow. I mean, it is legally enforceable as well, so that should also help spread the word.
So, uh, the 3M trucks, uh, I, I don't see them very often anymore, but, uh, they would be directed in that manner as well, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'll just say, I think there's, 3M trucks are still running, and I believe that they're still running every 11 minutes in the daytime and every 22 minutes at night.
Definitely still use Hillsborough at night, at least. I think they are going some other ways in the, in the daytime, but.
Make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Uh, this is the, almost there. This is the, to prove the agreement first.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, just to say for Kerry, uh, motion, this would be a motion to authorize the town manager to enter a municipal agreement with NC DOT to reassign the US 15501 truck route to NC 87 and to approve the associated $125,000 project cost match.
And second?
Uh, Commissioner Foley, Commissioner Bonnetts, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then up next is the budget amendment. So I have, uh, motion to approve the budget ordinance, amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 operating budget for the truck route signage project.
I move.
Commissioner Farrell?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Vos, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, all right, then we have the moved items, the request for the downtown events or administrative and administrative coordinator. Commissioner Farrell?
Um, I'll just keep this very short. I spoke with Jonathan twice today on this. At first, I was not in favor of this. I, I had my reasons. Um, he, uh, not necessarily adjusted, but got me in the right direction. The only issue that I had, and, uh, I hope that we can put this up when it comes to personnel or whoever we hire, is that we try to go outside of the scope of anybody that's with the PBA or Downtown Advisory Board or Main Street and, and get a nonpartisan or a non-favorable person, just, just for the count of favoritism that, that somebody can't say that John Doe got this job because he was with the PBA or so and so. That's, that's all I have to say about that. I think that.
Agreed.
The board's willing, I'm good with that.
Thanks.
Do you want to make the other motion?
Yes, I'd like to get a motion to amend or add that personnel would not be involved before or present with any of our advisory boards.
But every attempt to be made, uh.
I don't know if that would be legal to make that a requirement.
Good job. You create the position, it's his job to fill it.
Okay.
He's heard you, so.
Gotcha.
On the record, rock.
Thank you.
We'll take a motion to approve the proposed downtown events and administrative coordinator position, just in description and salary grade.
I move.
Commissioner?
Thank you.
Farrell, second, Mike Commissioner Bonnetts, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Up next is a closed session. So I'll take a motion to enter into a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143318.11A3 to consult with the town attorney and pursuant to NCGS 143318.11A3 to consult with the town attorney to protect attorney-client privilege to consider and give instructions concerning a judicial action titled, "Hear Sound of Pittsburgh versus Tyco."
So moved.
When I can.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonnetts. Commissioner Vos, all those in favor?
Aye.
Trish, read.
We're back from our closed session. We have no other business and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Uh, Matt Proton Baldwin, second. Commissioner Farrell, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.